Good evening. I'd like to call the October 17th work session of the Mathacton Board of School Directors to order. Please rise for the pledge. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, all board members except for Ms. Kathy Cleary are in attendance. Now it's time for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers. Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening we have one guest and scheduled speaker. Before I make that announcement, as you can see, then on for next week, we have the Horizon Project, the Mathacton Education Foundation, the Spirit of Mathacton Award, and the Arkola M. Awards. This evening, given the great pleasure to introduce Dr. Jason Sorgeni and Mr. Doug Kenwood to present the construction management owners representative recommendation. Dr. Sorgeni.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening, everyone. Doug Kenwood, Director of Facilities, and I are here this evening to make a recommendation regarding securing the services of a construction manager owners representative, commonly referred to by the acronym CMOR. The CMOR represents the interest of the client, in this case, Mathacton School District during new construction and renovation projects. Upon completing a multi-step process, this evening, we are recommending that the Board approve Dewey Engineering Incorporated to serve as Mathacton School District's Construction Manager Owners Representative. This awarding will be pending review of the contract by the district's solicitor. A request for proposal, or RFP, for CMOR services was prepared and issued on September 12th, 2023. The RFP was advertised both through the local newspaper as well as through direct solicitations that were sent to known construction management firms. Through this process, we were contacted by 19 firms that requested the full components of the RFP. Upon receiving some questions, we also issued an addendum to the proposal on September 22nd, which we then sent to all of the firms that had requested the RFP. Finalized submissions to the RFP were due on September 27th, I'm sorry, 29th. Seven firms submitted proposals for considerations. These firms included Colliers Project Leaders, Dewey Engineering Incorporated, Fidavia Construction Management and Consulting, Greyhawk Construction Managers and Consulting, New Road Construction Management, North Star Museums and Education, and Site Logic.
As Dr. Sorgeni previously mentioned, the proposal evaluation process included multiple steps. In step one, the district administration completed evaluations for each of the seven proposals based on firm experience, personnel qualifications, project approach, and fee structure. The highest three scoring firms were advanced to step two of the evaluation process, which was conducted on October 4th. In step two of the evaluation process, the three shortlisted firms were asked to prepare a presentation. A question and answer session followed each of the firm's presentation. The committee composed of district administrators and two representatives of the Board of School Directors evaluated each firm based on their presentation and responses to the committee's questions. Dewey Engineering and a second finalist firm were the highest two scoring firms and were subsequently invited to participate in a final round of submissions. Final submissions by the finalist firms were received on October 9th. By request of the committee, the submissions included insurance loss runs. A process update was presented to the property committee of the Board of School Directors on October 10th. The process is now culminated in a recommendation to the Board of School Directors in support of Dewey Engineering here this evening. I would now like to introduce Mr. Josh Greis, Principal in Charge with Dewey Engineering, and Mr. Zach Zazo, Senior Project Manager with Dewey Engineering, who will offer additional information about their firm and the services they provide.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. I see at least two Phillies sweatshirts, and I'm told that first pitch is 8:07, so we'll be as brief as possible tonight. We're really excited to be here. My name is Josh Greis, Principal in Charge with Dewey Engineering. With me is Zach Zazo. Zach is a Senior Project Manager with us, and we're just really excited to get to know you guys and to introduce ourselves as well. As far as our company overview, we have been in business since 1976, located historically in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, and we do also have branch offices in Ambler, Wilmington, and Scranton. So our staff of professionals services the eastern Pennsylvania region into New York City, down to Delaware, and really the K-12 public education sector is really what we have thrived in, especially over the past 35 years or so. Multiple repeat clients, very complex projects involving phasing and all the complicated things that come along with keeping a building in operation as you're also trying to tackle a new construction project or renovation. We are a full-service firm, meaning that we are not just construction managers who will be on site. We are also proud to offer architectural services. We have in-house mechanical, electrical, and plumbing services, athletic facility design. So, you know, really, it's our staff and the credentials and the background of our staff that I think really sets us apart and really enables us to tackle the complicated projects and answer questions promptly and with confidence that we're giving you correct information. We have about 95 people that are in support. We have technical specialists that are focused on certain systems, you know, so if there's a specific issue, a specific question that we need help with, a phone call away in-house, we will get the answer for you. So we're proud to offer those services. In addition, a lot of really good in-house budgeting, cost estimating people, capital planning, obviously, the stuff that you guys are looking to tackle with your long-term plan. Again, we offer those services in-house. So I think that, again, really sets us apart. So as far as the team for Mathacton, this will be it. You know, I will be the principal in charge. Zach will be a Senior Project Manager, meaning he will be on-site for some of the longer-term projects. We're going to be the team. We're not going to come in here and give you a presentation and then bring in people that you're not going to have seen. So also, along with Zach, we will have Elizabeth Hampshire. Elizabeth is an EIT, meaning she's preparing for her professional engineering exam, actually, in just a few weeks. She will be our capital projects coordinator. So some of the, what we call, summer projects or the projects that are turned around rather quickly, especially over the summer timeframe, Elizabeth will help to plan, to bid, and execute those projects on-site. And just gave you an example of Mike Hartney. Mike is an electrical specialist with us. He's actually an electrician by his previous trade. He brings an extensive amount of experience with data systems, fire alarm systems. Again, it's a lot of stuff that, especially with a more complex project such as a phasing, maybe a high school renovation, the types of systems that are really critical that need to stay in service throughout that project. Just as an example, these are the types of people that we can bring to the table to help make a smooth project. Project catalysts, we like to include that term. So it's three of our other principals, Arif Fazil, who is our president, Henry Gariello, and Jamie Lynch. And really, the catalyst team, we kind of use that term to really inject some other energy and some other opportunities into your projects, specifically with grant opportunities. We have been very successful recently in seeking out and obtaining grants for clients. Some of those are RACP grants, which are state-funded, ACE grants, which are alternative and clean energy grants also by the state. So, you know, really, again, they're principals with the firm and they're in a support role at this point, but obviously extremely qualified to help out and execute. So this is me. Josh, I've been with Dewey for 21 years. So this was my first position out of college, and it has really been a tremendous fit and a great, great learning and growth experience. So my experience has been from a field representative, senior project manager, and now principal for several years. So we have seen it all. Zach and I have lived through experiences that, you know, we can, we can help navigate and work through very complex items with contractors, with architects, and really keep things moving. Zach Zazo, again, Zach has been with us for 16 years, so obviously another very seasoned professional with us. He carries credentials of his own, including LEED certification, which for sustainable building especially is extremely important. Zach loves being out in the field. He loves getting dirty every day, and he loves seeing stuff go together, and he loves being in charge of coordinating people. So again, we're very fortunate to have Zach on the team with us, and he will definitely bring a level of senior-level management along with his on-site presence. Again, Mike Hartney, I'm not going to repeat too much, but just as an example of other technical specialists that we can bring along with our team. I mentioned Elizabeth. She, again, will be the capital management support. So projects such as chiller replacements, roofing replacements, paving, you know, you name it. And the really nice thing about our capital planning services is we can tackle the design services for most of these projects in-house. I mentioned our architectural services, our MEP engineering services. So rather than having a separate design professional that would design and come up with the technical aspect of the project and then leave the management over to somebody else, we can tackle the entire project from design, bidding, and then on-site management. And Elizabeth will be extremely integral to that process. So again, we will be advocates. We will make sure that things are done efficiently, done on time, done on budget. We are extremely, extremely proud and happy to be here for this opportunity. We check all the boxes, I think, and, you know, if you would reach out to any of our repeat clients, especially in the K-12 sector, I'm sure that they would reinforce that point. So again, we are not construction managers who are going to come out, sit in a trailer, push papers around, do a quick daily report, and go home. We really bring a lot more to the table throughout the planning, the budgeting, and the bidding phase of the projects as well. We really want to help you guys manage your risk throughout the process because you're undertaking a pretty substantial transformation of some of your facilities. There's inherent risk involved with that. We are here to help guide you through that process, to help protect you with your contract language, to work with your solicitor to make sure that you guys are covered. Those are the types of things that we do to look out for our clients. Did you want to speak to this, Doug? Okay. So as part of the proposal, obviously, fee, fee proposal was part of that. We do have a pretty good sense of what the planned projects are. So, you know, we took a stab at a fee structure that we think makes sense, that is kind of adaptable depending on size of project, scope of project, maybe schedule. So for the, what we're calling, major capital projects that would have a separate architect, we kind of have a sliding scale, again, depending on duration of project and cost of project. Okay, so that could range anywhere from about a 3.3% or, I'm sorry, 2% even fee to upwards of a nine and a half percent fee. And, you know, again, it's really based on, once we start the planning process and understanding what the scope of the project is, you know, we can fall within this general range of fees. This certainly isn't intended to be an absolute catch-all of everything, but, you know, we do have a pretty good feel for what the fee structure should be, and, you know, we're proud to present this to you. For the capital summer projects, those are the ones, again, that typically we would be also the design professional. We also have a scale there. Now, these are typically smaller budget projects, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe a couple million dollars for, for the larger ones, certainly not into the, you know, the scale that would be in the top portion. But these are fees, basically, that we have used for a lot of clients that have us under retainer services and that we provide capital projects for. It's very, it's pretty much a similar fee structure that is used for many K-12 clients. So there's basically a fixed fee, nominal fixed fee, plus a percentage of the project. Again, it's kind of tough to give a fixed proposal until we really know what the scope of each one is. This fee structure, we found, works out very well, we think, for our clients. So that would be, again, for the capital or summer project-type projects. We're happy to answer any questions, maybe, before I turn it back over to... Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Greis. In summary, the committee is recommending Dewey Engineering based on the capability of the firm to provide highly experienced and credentialed staff dedicated to Mathacton School District projects. Dewey Engineering is able to provide turnkey services from design to construction for both large-scale and smaller-scale engineering projects. During the larger-scale projects, Dewey has the expertise and capacity to not only provide onsite construction phase services, but also pre-construction and bidding phase services. These services, some of which are traditionally provided by the district's architects, include things like constructibility reviews, multiple rounds of cost estimating, scheduling, and value engineering where appropriate. Dewey will serve as our advocate throughout all phases of construction-related projects, and additionally, has a successful track record of seeking and assisting districts with obtaining grant funding to help offset project costs. In closing, it is the recommendation of the committee to approve Dewey Engineering of Bethlehem, PA, to serve as construction management owners representative as presented, pending review of the contract by the solicitor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenwood. Thank you, Dr. Sorgeni. Are there questions from members of the Board? Mr. McGinnis?
Could you go back to your fee schedule slide for me? I just have some clarifying questions. The, let's say it's a 24-month project. I tell you what, let's use the 36-month as an example. Are you tiering those and to get a blended rate? So the first 10 million is 9.6, the next 10 is 4.8, and anything above that is 3.3, and you're blending that rate? Or are we getting the 4.8 as soon as we pierce the $20 million veil?
Correct. So it would be prorated based on any, any cost in between those values?
So it's a blended rate? I asked you two questions. You said correct, so I'm confused even more.
I'm not sure what you mean by blended.
Blended. First 10 million is 9.6, second 10 million is 4.8. Blend those rates to get a average.
The total project cost, so the percentage swing between the 10 and the 20, the percentage would kind of be prorated based on if it's, you know, 17 million, it would fall within that...
Let's say it's $20 million and $1. What are you charging me?
$20 million and $1.
I pierced the $20 million veil.
It would essentially be the 4.8. So again, it's not, you're not, we're not kicking you into the next full percentage amount or anything. It's, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question correctly.
Perhaps I'm asking a poorly worded question. So as long as it's north of $20 million, it's 4.8. You're not going to charge me 9.6 on the first 10 and 4.8 on the second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Correct. That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And the duration of the contract proposed is a one-year or is it a multi-year?
Our... For a project-specific or for our proposed agreement to the district?
The agreement tonight, which is going to, I'm going to ask you the next question. The agreement tonight that we're voting on is a one-year deal?
I'll let Dr. Sorgeni answer.
Okay.
We're looking at, it's a one-year deal. It's on a retainer. However, by project, there are also associated costs.
Gotcha. So we're nine months into our first year. We decide to build a two-year project. We hire you guys. A year and a half rolls by. We're not happy with you. We can remove you from the one-year contract, but you still have the project assigned you in a different contractual setting?
If we need a separate agreement for specific projects, we can certainly execute separate agreements.
Is that usual course of business for how you guys, or is it just one of those...
Yeah, we certainly had separate, especially for a much larger-scale project, which typically would have an AIA contract associated with it rather than our standard agreement.
Yep.
We would certainly have a standalone agreement that would be separate from any retainer or any ongoing capital project agreements.
Gotcha. We, not tonight. I know we're not voting on it, but tomorrow, excuse me, next Tuesday, we vote on you for the one-year. If we do any projects, they have to be with you. Is that lettered in the agreement?
They don't necessarily need to be with us. No, absolutely not. If you guys, I mean, let's say that there's an alternative purchasing way. If you guys want to go Co-Stars or, you know, some other method of, of executing a project, we're not going to get in the way of that. You know, we're basically saying, these are the services we can provide. If you choose to use us for that, this would be our fee structure. This would be our agreement, but you're certainly not, you can certainly execute projects however you guys wish.
So nothing on our vote next Tuesday has anything to do with this, this scale? Until we sign a, another contract with you to manage that specific project?
Again, I can, I can defer to these guys as far as what the intent...
Well, what's normal course of business? How do you guys usually work? I just want to make sure everyone's clear on what we're voting for. I want to make sure I'm clear on what we're voting for.
If, so it's kind of two different things. So if you're asking for an engineer of record for capital services and for retainer services, ongoing services, it would be agreement X. If you're looking for a construction manager to walk you through the process of design, planning, schematic planning, and then through construction, most likely that is going to be a separate standalone agreement anyway.
Where this fee structure comes in?
Correct.
Gotcha. So next, next week's vote is simply for an owners' rep contract. Thank you very much.
And I would just say, there's no exclusivity with that. So if there is something else, for example, if we were utilizing SOBEC for roofing, or we were working with KCBA on a particular project, there is no exclusivity in that.
Any other questions, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, just real, thanks for the overview. Just curiosity, you do have the branch office in Ambler. Do you have any local references, any clients here currently, Montgomery County, Northern Chester County?
Upper Dublin School District, in particular, would be one. Jeez, Zach, help me out here.
Yeah, we just finished a multi-year project at Upper Dublin. We did their high school 10 years ago. The Upper Dublin High School we did 10 years ago, and we just finished, we did that capital improvement project for them, and we just finished...
Excuse me. Sir, sir, could you go to the mic, please? Thank you.
Yes, we did Upper Dublin High School approximately 10 years ago we completed, and we just did the Sandy Run Middle School. That project has also just completed. So either of those two.
All right. Thank you. And then I believe our previous rep had a $4,000 a month charge. I don't see that in the fee schedule here. Is there a ongoing fee, monthly fee for your services as a general?
So I sent a draft agreement over to Dr. Sorgeni and Mr. Kenwood. I think that structure was 2,500 a month for a retainer-type agreement. Again, we're not pushing one over the other. We're just giving you an example of what the services would be and what the monthly fee would be. I believe it was 2,500 identified in that agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from members to my right? Not seeing any to my left. Ms. Graff?
Yeah, Dr. Sorgeni, I probably should have asked this in committee, but do you remember or do you recall how long our contract was with our previous owners' rep? I guess my question is, we've gone through a very lengthy involved process to only sign a one-year contract.
Correct. But that's fairly standard and one that we can, you know, continue to elongate as the process goes on. You know, with our former rep, they did provide services for a long period of time, and we did extend that contract over that time.
So essentially, then, the contract document is, has a renewal clause that we can just, if we don't give notice, it automatically renews, or...
No, I believe we give notice for it to renew.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Perdue?
I do have one. Dr. Sorgeni, maybe in reference to the other company, do you, you didn't list it. What was the other company? Out of the seven, I believe, or six, you had two?
We did. Site Logic was the other finalist.
Site Logic. Okay. And I have one more question. Just give me a second. Do you have questions? Go ahead. I'll come back.
I just had one comment. I would imagine you're not going to be here next week. Like, this is it. I don't mean that as you have to come back next week. I'm just asking.
Correct. We did not intend for them to come back next week.
And that's fine. So I just had a comment. If all this goes through and it's booked through, for me, the frustrating part about being on a school board is to realize the difficulties that a public entity, especially K-12, has versus a private company. So I'm happy to see your experience in that realm, and I will be a member of the public in a few months. in a few months, so most of your work, I will be a citizen sitting out there. And I am very, very interested in hearing ways, like you talked about those grants, and just the transparency of, sometimes the costs to me are shocking because a school district will pay more than a private entity. So I just am making you, just making it aware that I don't expect to hear all the different costs because of that, but just, I appreciate your public, um, property experience, your K-12 experience, but whatever we can do to make it a little fair for the little guy, because I consider a school district the little guy, but we are not treated by companies that way. And so I just will make, it's just more of an observation and a comment, because I've kind of bit my tongue a lot at some of the, the percent, percentage increases we pay for like, for example, for a gas tank over what a Wawa would pay for a gas tank. It seems, it does not seem correct. So I'm not sure how much I will say as a member of the public, but you may hear me say things like that.
Any other questions, Ms. Perdue?
Yeah, I do have two more. One for Dr. Sorjeany, when will the, um, contract review?
Uh, we are prepared to begin November 1st, so it would be the same time next year.
No. When will, when will it be reviewed by the solicitor?
Oh, it's in the process now. It's been sent to the solicitor, so he's in the process of reviewing that.
Would that be reviewed before we vote next week?
That's the intent, yes.
Okay. And then my, um, second question is, um, for Dewey. I, I know you mentioned all your services are in-house. Do you contract out to any third party at all?
Um, we would. So we are not professionally insured for things such as asbestos, lead, you know, hazardous materials. That would have to be a separate professional that the district most likely would contract with directly. Um, when we get into specialized, uh, food service scopes, or maybe, um, an auditorium renovation, for example, with specific theatrical components, we would certainly look for a consultant in those types of cases.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Alston?
Hi, thank you for coming. I just wanted to just sum up so I know what it is, um, we're, we're voting on for next week. So what we're voting on is a one-year contract for services on retainer at the rate of $2,500 a month, where previously it was 4,000 a month. It does not include the additional project cost per the proposed fee schedule. That's project by project. But then do those, does the proposed fee schedule then kind of get set in stone once we do sign this contract? And am I correct in what I previously just said?
You are correct, yes.
Thank you. And, and it does get set then, once we sign the?
That is the fee structure they've given us. However, there is economies of scale, so as we work through this process, there is the opportunity to work with Dewey as our projects come up to, uh, to help work on those costs as well.
Okay, so, so when we're signing this con, so when we're, we're approving this contract, um, next week, this is still the proposed fee schedule subject to negotiation or whatever, you know, however it looks?
Correct.
But that's just, this is still ballpark, not necessarily set in stone for everything?
This is their fee schedule that they've established. However, as we work through projects, we do have the opportunity to work with them to try and, and, uh, work on those costs and get those costs down.
Down, but not, they wouldn't be increased from this proposal?
Uh, that's the intent, because we do have these in, you know, this is part of the proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Ms. Graff?
Um, just to clarify, um, when you say we're going to look for opportunities, I think what I heard in the previous discussions and, and maybe in your presentation was, like, with the capital projects, which would be like our summer projects, we could potentially bundle them together. And instead of it being one $200,000 boiler and one $100,000 project or, and then a third project for 200, we'd be bundling them all together and be able to do it with the lower fee schedule. Is that what you meant?
Um, I, I think maybe what we meant was with personnel specifically, if we can have, um, Zach maybe help Elizabeth with, with something, you know, maybe there's a reduction in the, in the construction phase fee of projects. I mean, we, we can certainly group and bid projects, however the district chooses to do that. We can do it through alternate bids or, or however. Um, and certainly, you know, we're, whatever the, the project estimate is or construction costs, um, we'll try to keep that fee scheduled within the appropriate range. We're, we're not going to segregate things to kick it into a higher range, you know, we'll, we'll make sure it makes sense for you guys.
Okay. And then the other thing I just wanted to clarify, and I think this is a, a little bit of a distinction from our previous owners rep, and I think Dr. Sorjeany can confirm, but on the major capital projects, Zach will actually be physically on-site for us, eyes and ears every day, seeing what the subcontractors are doing, making, having the tailgate meetings, making sure the safety requirements are met, making sure our schedule is met, keeping things on track for us every, you know, virtually every day.
You, you just described exactly what Zach does every day, pretty much. And yes, that's, that's the case. So when there is a, a separate large project with a separate architect, design team, and we are the construction manager, Zach will be in the field eight hours a day all week.
Okay, thank you.
That's exactly what my biggest point we're saying, is that we really do want somebody there to prevent any further additional costs that were not necessary faults that were done. I just feel like in the past, we are still fixing things that we wish we would have caught sooner, so we really want people there at all times.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Yes, that is exactly my role. Um, as, as Josh stated, um, I like to get dirty. I do like, uh, construction. I love to be outside, and I like the challenges, and most of all, I like the, uh, when we figure out those challenges on the site. And the 25 years' experience that I have, I've been good at, um, goal-setting and getting the team to work together. Sometimes the hardest part of these projects is to get 70 grown men to get along at the same time. So that being said, I'm not here to make everybody get along, I'm here to make sure that your owners' needs are met. Quality control, the budget, obviously, and the schedule are three of the things that I'm going to be looking at to make sure. And at, during the project, we've been to work with Doug and work with your team to make sure that the owner's intent is met. We want to make sure that the projects that you are envisioning come to life for your students and your staff. And I need to, and somebody needs to be there full-time to pull that off. So yes, that's exactly what my role would be.
Thank you, that's, I appreciate that.
Certainly. Any other comments to my left? Questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that ends the guests and scheduled speakers for this evening. Um, we will then, uh, for, for next week, go into the reports as listed. Um, we then have a public, uh, public comment on board action items, and then we go into the board, uh, meeting minutes, and then we into fiscal items. With the absence of Mr. Booker this evening, I'm going to take on the fiscal items. So, uh, for your approval next week, we have the list of bills, we have the treasurer's report, we have the budgetary transfers as, as attached, and for the Planetarium 9D, we have approved the change order of PLC COGC 004, which is a credit of $10,200 for unused allowances, and that is on the Planetarium or the Horizon project as attached. Any questions on fiscal matters? To my left, my right, seeing none, then we have personnel matters. Dr. Sorjeany?
Good evening again. For your consideration this month, we have the following personnel items. One resignation professional, Amber Martin, librarian at Warsester. We thank Amber for her service to the students of Warsester, and we wish her well. Two resignations classified, Lourdes Gonzalez, recess assistant at Woodland. We thank Lourdes for her service to Mathacton, and we wish her well. And John Zidar, custodian at the high school, resignation for retirement. We thank Johnny for his 25 years of service to Mathacton, and we wish him all the very best in retirement. We have one employment professional, Laura White, fifth-grade instructor at Skyview. We look forward to welcoming Laura to the Mathacton family. Two employments classified, Robert Mitchell, monitoring assistant at Arcola, and Christopher Washington, information technology specialist at the Farina Education Center. We welcome both Robert and Christopher to the Mathacton family. We have one change of status classified, Kathleen Schlenker, from personal care assistant at Skyview to monitoring assistant at Arcola, and we thank Kath for taking on this new role. Three uncompensated leaves classified, Shaleed Ford Bay, custodian at the high school, Kelly Rubendall, custodian at Arcola, and Kristin Bar Jones, personal care assistant at the high school, each for the time periods noted. Supplemental contracts for sponsors, tech ed equipment work, homecoming chaperones, pupil services, and curriculum departments work, and the virtual math help desk, and the addition of Daniel Brown to the custod, custodial rather casual on-call list. We welcome Dan to Mathacton. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Sorjeany to, to my left, Ms. Reese?
Um, two questions. Um, if you're able to, Laura White is a common, uh, name. Do you know where she is coming from?
Uh, I, I don't have that information with me this evening.
That's okay. I just, I just literally was talking to a Laura White the other day, and she was looking for a job. So I don't think it was her, but like, it was just really weird. Um, and I would, I would also ask, um, just because, you know, we've been doing some hiring, and we've been doing some hiring at the higher pay scale, which is typical for 2023, I have no issue with it. Last month, I believe it was Spanish, which, difficult to find, fifth grade, no, still difficult because there's a teacher shortage. Um, I was just curious if you're able to share how many applicants we received approximately for a role like a fifth-grade teacher?
Uh, fifth grade, the applications are actually relatively low, and part of the issue being that the majority of certifications that are being issued now are, uh, pre-K-4, not fifth and sixth grade. So, uh, it's a relatively uncommon certificate now. Someone either has to have the K-6 from, that was issued in years past, or have the four through eighth grade, uh, certificates that are being issued now.
Okay. And, and I, I ask that because we're having issues where I work as well in that grade level, and that, that explains it.
That fifth and sixth grade level is a very gray area as far as certifications go right now.
And I'm assuming this person is coming from somewhere because it looks like she's being held?
Yes, and I just did not have the information with me, and I apologize.
No problem, no problem. And then, did I miss winter coaches?
Um.
What I, because I don't remember seeing that in September, and I don't remember seeing it.
I actually have those to add for the works, or for the action meeting.
Okay, okay. Good, I figured because I thought we might be missing them. Um, thank you.
Any other questions to my left? Ms. Perdue?
Um, just under 10M, on number two and three, can you explain why the, um, department equipments are under supplemental contract?
Yes, this is work that is done on the actual equipment. Uh, it's above and beyond the work that would be expected through the, uh, the teachers and during the teacher day. This is something that I've worked with Doug on. We had a list of items that needed, uh, some attention. We looked at that, we looked at whether or not those could be accomplished through the two teachers, and determined that that was an appropriate avenue to go, and that's why they exist as supplemental contracts.
So it's actually for repairs on the equipment?
Uh, some repairs, some, uh, maintenance on them as well.
Okay, can, can that be updated to reflect that a little bit? Just because I think the way it's worded is a little misleading. Just because on the supplemental contract, I'm not used to, I mean, I, I feel like it reads like equipment, but you're seeing it's something else.
Okay, yes.
Any other questions to my left? Ms. Alston?
Um, so 10A, um, the resignation, I was just wondering if you have any more information you could share about that one?
I, I really, I unfortunately can't share, uh, specific information other than the fact that, uh, she was, uh, provided another opportunity.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then, um, 10M for the supplemental contracts for, um, Homecoming Dance, it says replacement supplemental contracts, and I think last month there was 3,100 of, is this instead of 3,100?
Yes, this is replacing several of the individuals who had committed but can no longer attend.
Okay, so it, so?
It's not additional money, it's, uh, already factored into.
Instead of 3,100 is now 930?
No, that money is the replacement cost. 3,100 is the total amount of that, that, this particular amount is replacing individuals who can no longer make it, so it's not in addition to who was there before.
It's different people are getting the money.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any questions to members to my right? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Sorjeany. Uh, next on the agenda, we have, bear with me, we have curriculum, uh, there are no items for your approval next week, and then we have policy, Mr., or, Mr. Regina.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Uh, with 25 policies on the agenda, uh, the policy committee's been pretty busy lately. Uh, for a first read of some of the new ones, uh, some of the notable ones is 304.1, the nepotism policy. We made changes to that policy to reflect, uh, some consistency with policy 304, employment of district staff. For 247, hazing, uh, we added required language, uh, with respect to reporting threats to the safety and security of others to the threat assessment team, and 313, evaluation of employees. Uh, we removed the language about improvement plans because that is mandated by the state within Act 13. And those are the only changes, uh, for this evening.
Any questions for members to my right? Members to my left, seeing none for policy. Thank you, Mr. Regina. Next on the agenda, we have other, we have gifts and donations. Approve the generous gift from the Black Bun, uh, Giving Fund, which is an employer match incentive for Leanne Lopez, given, uh, to Eagleville Elementary in the amount of $200. Approve the generous gift from the Buxmont Chapter, PA Society of Tax and Accounting Professionals, to the high school for expenses for the Future Business Leaders of America Competition at Hertz, PA, in the amount of $828. We have, uh, construction management owners rep, uh, as reflected in the earlier presentation, and we have transportation item of approve the following drivers as part of the transportation employee roster for the 20 through 24 school year, Thomas Blystone and Sean Lyons. And that ends, uh, the, the items for your approval. I'll turn it over to Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Next we have dates for board member, members calendars. Um, one I noted, there might be another one on there. Um, the November 8th education committee meeting is on a Wednesday instead of a Tuesday because of election day on the 7th. Um, that's all I see. Um, and, uh, the December 4th meeting is, um, Monday?
It's typically, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to, yes, the December 4th is a Monday and not a Tuesday for the reorganization and regular board meeting. Um, now it's time for old and new business. Anyone have any old or new business this evening? Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah, I just, uh, in my official capacity, so to speak, I'd like to note the passing of Carl Santoro. Uh, Mr. Santoro was a coach and special ed ca, education teacher here at Mathacton for 36 years. Uh, I had the privilege to be coached by him, um, and he was as dedicated, uh, a human being to special education and those students as you would ever want to see, and the world was a better place with him. And I, I just wanted to mention that, uh, he passed away, and he was a really good man, and we're all going to miss him.
Thank you, and our condolences to Mr. Santoro's family. Um, anyone else for old or new business this evening? Ms. Graff?
You know, for anyone who is not tracking it, the field hockey team has won their first round of the PEC playoffs tonight, 4 to 1. They'll be proceeding on to the finals on Thursday night against Boyertown. So, good news for them.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, seeing none, it's time for courtesy of the floor and opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and you can submit questions via email to information@mathacton.org.
Jim Malik, Warsester. Your new construction people, do they know something we don't know? Your guy said something about a major transformation regarding building. Does he, does he know something we don't know? I think he does. Um, I'm on the Zerby New High School Construction Committee, and we met this past Saturday. Um, what I learned is, we're building a new high school. I'll give you what I found out at the meeting. Liz, somebody overheard you allegedly telling Dr. Zerby the following, "We don't care how much it costs, we're going to pass it." Did you say that?
Yes, sir, I did say that in jest regarding the, uh, you know, when we were talking about auditorium and, and the arts, but that was only in jest, sir.
Okay. To me, it's not funny, okay? Because I actually believe it. I don't think it's in jest. Um, my subcommittee met, and they had something called the Jim Malik 38-second rule. We get to introduce ourselves, after 38 seconds, I get cut off. Nobody else in the committee got cut off, nobody else got censored. The Jim Malik 38, uh, second rule. I mean, I got to really get good to get 38 seconds. I was mocked by Mr. Winters in our committee. I was mocked by Mr. Winters in our committee. I'm asking questions, and he's sitting over in his chair, doing this to his head, going, "Think, think." What does that mean, Paul? Do you like mocking participants? I mean, totally unprofessional. Dr. Zerby claimed he knew nothing about a new high school being built. It's like incredulous, he couldn't believe I asked a question. Mr. Andrews told me that KCBA knows about the new high school and where it's going to be built. How's that the case? How does KCBA know, and you don't? It doesn't make a lot of sense. I was surprised at the last meeting that the biggest concern by your school board candidates was abbreviations and anacronyms. With all the stuff going on, COVID, test scores, ranking, bullying, fights in the classroom, anacronyms? Let me give you an acronym. What does MIAC mean? Does anybody know what that means? Because I've got an email here that says one of your employees got MIAC hours the last time they helped with the Apex Awards, and they got that for payment. Can somebody explain how that works? One of your teachers doing work for the foundation, getting reimbursed MIAC hours for payment? Maybe you can look that up and, you know, tell me what that's all about.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. Looking at the list of bills for a vote next week. One item pertains to a Chromebook lease. I think it was $165,000, and it said annual lease. I thought that we were leasing Chromebooks for three years. And I hear out in the industrial community where a lot of laptops and desktop computers are used, that they're now leasing for four or five years because the quality of the goods is such that they're not worn out at the end of three years. And that's something for school districts to think about. Also, there was an Amazon Prime membership listing. My understanding was that memberships were something around $100, and this was a bill for $779. Maybe someone can answer that, where I think Mr. Bricker is absent this evening. Also, Mr. Bricker was instrumental in preparing some debt tables relative to three levels of renovation, depending on how the campus project goes. The borrowings were for 30 years, and we all know that interest rates have gone up a lot, but the interest rates were not mentioned in these debt tables. And it seems like you want to limit the monthly principal payments to around $9 million, and that may be because you're anticipating other projects ad infinitum. I thought that PDE rules limited debt payments on bond issues to 25 years. So when you're proposing 30 years, you end up paying more for interest than for the original project. Which, and then relative to the next fiscal year, here in October, at one of their meetings at the Upper Marion Area School District, they said the index for next year was 5.3%, but we haven't heard that as to what it will be for Mathacton.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, and, you know, relative to the issue before the committees-
Thank you for your comments.
I see.
Thank you.
Yeah, you need time for all the other guests. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor this evening? Seeing none, any comments from board members? All right, seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn? I see Mr. McGinnis. Can I have a second? Ms. Cancro, thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.